All right, welcome everybody to Town of Water, a planning board meeting for November fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Angela, can we start with roll call, please?
We're here.
Rebecca Higgins.
Here.
Stacy Walker.
Anne.
Diane Gray.
Here.
Jill Prescott.
Here.
Next on the agenda is public hearing, we don't have one. Next is old business, forty Logan Circle, Lourdes, De Mayo, Ron De Mayo. And this is a follow-up to the last meeting. You have an update, correct?
Yeah.
I think we all saw the.
The last.
Yeah, go ahead.
At the last meeting, you requested a lighting schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And show where I was going to be putting the lights on the garage, I submitted that to Michaela and Angela, and I think you should have that in front of you.
Yep. Yep, we have the memo from Michaela and we have the additional information to, it's pretty dreadful.
Yeah.
Did you guys have any questions?
No.
No, that was the only thing that we hadn't come back from.
Yeah, 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 so I think everything was.
Yeah, sorry you had to come back.
Yeah. If nobody has any questions, I just need a motion.
Yeah, the lighting was the only thing I thought needed changing, you think so a lot, it looks great. Um, I had nothing else, I thought everything is there and the standards.
All I need is a motion to find the application complete and to approve it.
I'll make a motion to find the application for a closure. When was it slash?
De Mayo.
De Mayo, complete.
And you'll have to go through the findings of fact, so going through the standards one by one.
We will.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just make sure.
Yeah, we're just doing the application, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can you use the second?
All those are papers? So, we'll do the finding facts and then it'll be good?
Yeah.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is new business, dock rentals, commercial docks, John Bell.
Hello.
Hello.
So this is an item that I had brought up during the councilman's meeting. We went out sometime in June to take a tour of the lake. And there was questions that were brought up previously from other residents of the lake on kind of what the regulations were for dock spaces. And so I started digging into it before I brought out the councilman to do the tour. And found out that the town doesn't actually have any type of regulations on docks at all, which I thought was kind of odd. I'm a new resident to the town, councilman wanted to try to do something to help the community, so I thought that this would be an area that I could help out the town. I live on the lake and I've noticed that there's a more and more abundancy of boats that are stored on the lake. So I brought the councilman out, gave him a tour and they agreed with me that it appears as though there's a lot more dock spaces that are out there than previously ever before. And so we're not regulating them at all, so there's not like, we can do anything about it, but maybe we should be thinking about the future and trying to regulate it in some sort of fashion. What the answers are to that, I don't specifically know. I have put forth three or four different documents that I've found from other towns and other communities and how they regulate the docks. So I wanted to bring it to you folks and see if I could assist in any way.
So your experience is just, I thought maybe by based on some of the information we received, do you have experience with docks or in communities that have, no, okay.
No, I'm a contractor by trade.
Okay.
I have rented on the lake for roughly eight years, lived on it for about four.
Is there any particulars places that you are talking about?
You can just look right around Route five, I think we've all noticed it.
Yeah.
And I'm not, you know, I don't know what we do from here, to be honest with you, like I said, there's no regulations in place, so I don't think that there's.
Unfortunately, there is no, there is no, I mean, all that stuff was all approved from Mike.
Yep.
Prior to going in. And unfortunately, yeah, he went through all the proper channels and unfortunately, there is no regulations, there should be, I agree.
So you can pull a, you can pull a dock permit? I mean, how did, how did you get a permission to put out fourteen slips?
He just, he just asked if he could do it and.
I can speak on that for you if you need advice.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let's do it, you're gonna have to come up to the podium.
Okay, I can speak on that for you. Uh, I have a little bit of familiarity with.
If you could say your name too.
Yes, Sandy Manette. So I think the two docks in question that you're mentioning, they actually have submerged land leases from the state of Maine. In the state of Maine, the land that's covered with water is owned by the public, but the land underneath belongs to the state. Any structure that is put up that is more than five hundred square feet, so dock space, that is bigger than that, you must get a submersible land lease from the state from, it would be from just the state of Maine.
Five hundred square feet?
Five hundred square feet.
How do they determine that?
Uh, it's actually, so.
Is it, is it the amount of dock space or is it the amount of docks that, the amount of space that the docks take up?
If it's over five hundred square feet, I don't, I don't know the exact details, I can, I can read it, I guess.
You have docks and then you have open water in between the docks.
Yeah, basically if you're taking over space that can't be navigable.
Yeah, over five hundred square feet.
Over five hundred square feet, then you need a lease from the state. So Sunnyside cottages and the campground actually have those because they are larger structures. Anyone, if you're under five hundred square feet and your dock is in less than seven months, you can, it's public use of the property. If it stays in, so if it was a pier, cement, something permanent, then they would have to get a lease to do so. So that helps a little bit.
Interesting.
The other one that I have a question to though was the, the old restaurant right at the, the boat launch area itself.
Yep.
I don't know how, how that came about or.
I, I, I know because I'm personally involved with that.
Yeah.
It's a friend of mine that did it. And like I said, he, he talked to Mike before he did it. He came to the town, told him what he wanted to do, Mike says, I can't stop you others.
Yeah.
He, he wanted to add on to it and I specifically told him I wouldn't do it. I, I, you know, people aren't happy with what you did to begin with, don't make it worse.
Yeah.
But, yeah, he did go through all the proper channels, unfortunately.
I mean, the proper channels you're speaking of is basically talking to a code enforcement who has no jurisdiction over that in reality.
Well, I mean, he went to the town, I don't know.
That's a jurisdiction that he had at the time, right.
I think he had, I think he had gone, even called the DEP or the state, I don't know, I, I can't speak for him, I could find out. But I, I, I just know that he did go through what he thought was all the proper channels to, to add those docks.
Regardless, I'm not trying to go backwards and take away anything, but I think moving forward, I mean, what's to prevent me from throwing out sixteen slips on my property?
I, I, I agree, there should be something, I wasn't fond of it when he did, trust me, I, I was happy the way it was before with just the five docks. Because I'm involved in helping putting them in and out.
Yeah.
Um, but, yes, it's, it's definitely a, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky situation because there is no ordinance, there is no, you can only have X amount of docks. I think it should be, personally, I think it should be something like if you have X amount of frontage, you should only be allowed X amount of docks. Like one slip per fifteen feet of frontage or something to that nature, that's how it should be. Unless you have a mile of frontage, you shouldn't have twenty slips.
Right.
You know what I mean? But.
Well, then what's, I mean, so, and Mike and, my major concern, guys, here is that somebody just basically starts a business up.
Yep.
Of dock slips and essentially running a marina and that pollution decreases the, the lake's overall longevity.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's a, it's a great lake and I think it's a great resource for the town and I just don't want to see it deteriorate.
Yeah, I don't know if you go to the, the Lake Association meeting, the annual meeting, I went to that in August.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, Ospey Lake is in the top ten percent of most cleanliness lakes in the whole state of Maine and there's.
Yeah.
I don't know, over eight hundred lakes or something.
Yep.
So that's a good sign, you know what I mean, obviously.
Yep, but now we have, you know, the bladder wart that's come in, which has been brought in from a boat, obviously.
Right.
So it's, I mean, the more traffic you have, the more likelihood you have of that type of activity.
Yeah, and unfortunately.
Not to say that people that rent slips leave them there all the time and they can bring it in, brok it out, you know, gives the availability for that. I'm just saying it's something that we should potentially look at and we had kicked it over to you guys, I don't know, three or four months ago. And so I just wanted to come here and speak my mind to see if I could try to get some life out of it.
Yeah, it is something that's been on our, our pending.
I was gonna say, we didn't, right, since last year.
Our pending, it's been on this pending agenda thing for a while and, and I don't think, as a planning board, I don't think we really had any good plans to, to get something going.
Well, I, I think.
I've had some suggestions, but.
Well, I think what it's come back to is enforcement, though. I'm sure the four towns, right, that you looked up have a harbor master.
Nope.
No, they don't?
Nope.
So how do they enforce it, who's responsible for it?
Basically look for the people of the community to enforce it. So you basically, I mean, same thing that they do now, essentially with any construction projects that happen on the lake, you have to send out a notice to your neighbors. So if your neighbor, if your neighbors didn't get a notice, then they might call code enforcement and say, hey, I see somebody's doing something over here. Well, if you're not registering your dock, your neighbor's gonna notice and say, hey, why isn't Tim registering his dock?
I encourage you guys to take a look at the planning board minutes from twenty eighteen, early twenty eighteen, maybe late twenty seventeen, early twenty eighteen. We went through this whole dock process.
The whole thing, right, yeah.
And the town has absolutely no, no jurisdiction over its docks.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so the, one of the reasons of why I thought it'd be great if you came and talked to us all here in this forum is because when we're thinking about regulating options from the planning board perspective, it's about right, land use mostly. And so we're trying to get a better idea about like what the specific issues are, so we had, I think part of our discussion last time was we weren't exactly sure what was kind of the root of some of the problems that were happening and what, which effects we were concerned about. So we had talked a little bit about concerns about people parking vehicles on the side of the road.
Parking is a big issue, yes.
And how that was causing safety concerns and that those cars might be linked to units that had more people in them and, than spaces for parking. And that may or may not be linked to dock rentals, and so trying to figure out kind of that tie-in. We'd also talked a bit about just noticing higher boat traffic on the lake and, but not knowing without the data if that's actually connected to the rentals or just people being more active on the lake, so trying to kind of suss that out. We also talked about the more erosion from more boat traffic. And then the, the environmental issues with like the invasive species. And then the, you know, if folks are renting out private dock spaces but not getting any sort of licensing to do so and it's, is that now a commercial property? But it's not, is it acting as a commercial property even though it's in a residential zone? So those are kind of the things we've all been trying to figure out. And I think just hearing more from you and like, and what you and others have noticed can help us kind of zone into, to what kind of the root is there.
Yeah, I think originally where it came up, I think it was the erosion issue, wasn't it? That's where Mike brought it up again, was about erosion.
Yeah.
And the, and the game worn, I think, too.
Was it, yeah.
Talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And what David said, we got, the town has no jurisdiction over the docks, so we can't do anything anyway, can we?
Currently, right now, we don't.
Right, I think what you're proposing, though, is that we do, right?
Can, can we though, do we have that authority to do that?
Dennis?
Yes.
Yeah?
We.
Then we should.
In fact, Mike Mitchell was CEO at the time, back in two thousand and eighteen. And he, he was concerned whether or not he could have the time to witness all the docks, right? Not only, not only in Ospey Pond, but in Lake Arrowhead, Lake Sherwin, whatever the case may be.
Mm-hmm.
So he was, he was concerned that he was spending more time permitting docks than he would.
Than he had time for, yeah, like we said earlier, it's the enforcement thing is, is a big issue as well, you know, trying to enforce it.
So I have a question with, with a planning board, is the campground that a conditional use permit for all of those docks?
I don't know the answer to that, I want Sandy to, to have some kind of.
They have a submersible land lease along with Sunnyside cottages and that's through the Bureau of Parks and Lands. I think we'd have to look in the planning records for the conditionally used piece.
Because when he expanded the, and added fifty lots to the site, I thought, and my memory fails me. I thought that there was a conditional use permit to allow him to put out docks.
There wasn't a number though, was there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
But he's got the perfect opportunity because sites are, he's got so many sites versus, you know, the number of slips that he set, right? Whereas other folks, they don't have, they, they don't have the number of cottages that they got the number of slips, and so they're renting them out.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's no secret, that house on by the, by the launch is a, is a bed, it's a, what do you want to call it? What's the word here?
Airbnb.
Airbnb, yeah, I mean, it's a weekly rental, big sign out front, weekly rentals, dock rentals, he's not hiding anything.
Right.
Um, but I guess.
I don't think he, I mean, what, what is he doing that he needs to hide?
Nothing, it's not like he's saying it's, I'm not renting it out.
Right.
I mean, he's, he's.
We just.
He's a good, honest guy, I mean, I know him, I've known him for twenty-five years, he's, he's not, but he's likes to make money.
I think how we left it before was with, and I think Glenn Sharet too, Dave was talking about this with the, the neighbor with the dock and then the other dock and the dock and then all the dock boards and all that when it started happening, was we, they were gonna have the selectmen decide if we were going to take this on. And that's how I think Mike left it.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been talking about this since last year. So if you go to that, you go to that next level, and we discussed that before. And Mike did say, if we're gonna have these marinas or we're gonna do that, then we have to by law have a harbor master. So I don't know how.
That's why we kind of shied away from it, because how do you pay for that, how do you?
Right.
Right. The enforcement was a big, was a big piece of it. I agree, there's something should be done, definitely.
John, John was good enough to take the board around at the town. At the time, we were a select board, but now we're the town councilors, but, and he took us around and there's not just one or two, right?
Right.
There's multiple people that are renting slips.
Because, yeah, I only know that's right myself.
No, that's what the game worn came in and was talking about, who, who owned all these docks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a question, the ones that are in question that you're discussing with the campground. I understand what you said as far as five hundred square feet is concerned, you have to get permission, that would be for a homeowner who didn't have to get a permission.
Okay.
But the land that's being used, is that there, does that belong to the campground or is that state-owned land?
It belongs to the campground. I, I, I know quite a bit about the center of town, so.
So they own the land.
The campground actually owns, so.
The frontage, right.
Many, many years ago, prior to erosion, the land actually used to be much further out, that road's narrow itself. Um, but the campground actually owns under the road or open road, they have an easement to the state to use that property, so it is their.
Yeah, state has an easement to use their property, right?
Yeah.
Cross, so you can drive your car.
They, they own the campground's property.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah.
How well am I?
They, they, they own it.
It just seems like the, the concerns are more so with like the pop-up occurrences that are not at all getting licenses or, or, you know, like not the obvious commercial uses that are like permitted to be there, but the pop-up.
The homeowner, the individual homeowner or Airbnb.
The, the homeowner that it's presumed to be a residential use, but now is it functioning more like a commercial use? It seems like that's where the concern for.
That boat traffic itself, right.
Growing unregulated issues comes up because if, I, I presume that, you know, the campground or the cottages or whatever, that these businesses, you know, they have their property now, they can't keep growing exponentially, whereas there's residences all over the lake, so if everyone rents out their dock spaces, that's where it becomes an issue.
Right.
Right.
Or if everybody adds ten slips, goes out with a structure and wings it off, like, like Mike did, you know, he added eight or ten slips just on that one structure. It used to be two, four, six, eight, ten, and then he took two out and put this big floating structure and added tens, ten boat slips to. So it went from ten to eighteen, I guess, really, he added eight.
Well, another concern is too, is that like in towns like.
But it's more boats.
Towns like Herman, Maine, they had people that were taking boathouses and just throwing moorings out into the lake and they were just living on the lake. It was a major issue.
Mm-hmm.
If we don't do have something, some sort of regulation placed, this stuff can occur, and that's my fear.
Is there, does anybody know, is there any kind of mooring policy on the lake? I didn't think.
We didn't have anything, that's what we, that's what we're talking about.
I thought we looked in that, yeah.
Nothing at all.
But if you look at the state law, the Great Palms Act or whatever, there's for every hundred foot of frontage on the lake, you have one mooring.
But that, but do you have to own that frontage to have a mooring?
Uh, yes.
So not I, if I don't own property on the lake, I can't put a mooring, right? Okay. Not that I would want to, but it's good to know.
But that's going back to.
But that state.
No, fifteen years.
Right.
But.
Yeah, it is a, a little out of control, it definitely needs to, but I just don't know how.
Well. I mean, is it, is.
Our, how we, how we do it.
Can we amend the definition of a marina?
We talked about that with Mike too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then be able to, because in, in a current definition, it's a business establishment having frontage on navigable water as its principal use, providing for higher option of moorings or docking facilities for boats, blah, 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 blah. But I think the issue that we're seeing is the residential establishments that are renting out their docks essentially as marinas, right? So.
Which is one of them.
And but if you look at then the, the use chart, marinas are the planning board approval in three of the shoreline zones and are not allowed in the other shoreline zone. So if you regulate it that way, it could just be like, if they want to have a marina, they have to come get planning board approval. If they don't have planning board approval, they cannot rent out their dock space.
Well, what's the difference between me renting out that space and me just setting up six slips and I've got six friends that bring the boats over and I don't charge them? There's no difference between the two, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, you're right.
If you're, if, if you're charging your friends or not, is the difference, if you're making money.
Well, I'm not gonna charge my friends.
You're not gonna tell me, you know?
Same six boats, whether I'm making money or not, I mean.
You're trading off services, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean. I, like I said, if we.
Right, what are we gonna say to the homeowner, how much money did you get paid? This is, this is all part of how, how we're gonna track this down.
They're not gonna tell you. Somebody's gonna pay him cash.
And as far as Lake Arrowhead is concerned, Saco River Corridor does go around and they point out the docks and they call frequently. They can't do that in Ospey, but they do out in Arrowhead.
I think it should be every so many feet of frontage, you only allow X amount of dock.
Some of these places on Ospey Lake don't have a lot of frontage.
Then they only get one dock.
I mean, it's just like, it's, there's, there's always.
You want more docks, buy more property.
Like, well, there's a non-conform loss.
They all are.
Right, yeah.
So you can make, you can make certain situations work for people that already have a lot and have access to water.
Right.
People that have great of ways.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And they have docks.
Yeah.
Got that link.
Yeah, the association, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of the concerns of regulating number of boats per dock and, right.
And you mean enforcement and.
That's gonna be the higher part, yeah.
And I think that's why we tabled it, Dennis, was Mike was trying to figure out how, what that next step was gonna be with the enforcement part. And I, I think that's where we left it.
Yeah, I think it, it, I think it all comes back to the same challenge, I think it did back then, right, it was enforcement.
Nowadays with technology, you could essentially face somebody to fly a drone. And if you look and you see, okay, they have a dock, they're not paying for it, you know what the property is, you look at JIAS mapping. I mean, it's, I'm just saying, we either do something about it or we're, we're on, along for the ride because people are gonna start taking advantage.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we would have to snap the line and then.
How does the corridor do it on Arrowhead? Just bring boat out?
There, there's a regulation on Saco River Corridor on how big your docks can be.
Yeah, but how do they, how do they police it? Do they use a drone?
Um, well, they look at the realtor photos and then they call the realtor.
Okay.
Um, then they.
So it is aerial photo, it's different, it's not one specific where or anything, yeah.
Yep. It is drone, right, and but they do drive around as well.
Okay.
And take photographs.
So Ospey Lake is in the Saco River Corridor.
It is, right, yeah.
Right, but they don't.
I don't think so.
I thought it was.
They don't.
I think it is.
Yeah.
They don't cover it.
Because it.
Well, it flows into Arrowhead, so, yeah.
It, it, it don't cover it.
Flows into Lake Arrowhead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it probably is part of it, same, same body of water.
That's what they.
But they don't cover it.
Which flows into Ospey River, which flows into Saco River, yeah. Yeah, probably right.
I know what a lot of marinas do.
They don't really have Ospey, right, but they're in the corridor.
Been in the, boating for many years on the ocean. When you rent a slip at mariner, they act, you actually have to get a certificate from the, the city that you're mooring it at. It's a mo, it's called a mooring permit, and you have to have that sticker on the boat.
Even though you're at a dock.
Even though you're at the dock, and then they would have the.
For a sticker.
Someone in the mariner, or they would have marine fisheries come around every so often, check the boats, make sure they had a mooring.
And I'm sure there's a fee for that sticker.
Yeah, you have to pay for the sticker.
Yeah.
And if the boat didn't have the mooring sticker on it, they would end up, you'd get a, a ticket to bail.
I think the other suggestion I was thinking about, proposing was, you know, besides the X amount of feet per dock, and Dennis said, some places only have a little bit, they may only have access, but the dock should be, you might get one dock free or something, but if you're gonna have five docks, those should be like adding on to your house and it should be considered taxable asset. Especially for people that are making money and renting them out for god knows how much per slip. Those, those extra docks should be, you should be paying the town something for that, whether it be a taxable property or per dock, a hundred bucks per dock, two hundred bucks per dock, whatever. There should be some kind of fee or, I think it should be created like taxes personally, you know, and that's how my, I, I think that the town could benefit from it. Maybe we could get money enough to pay to have somebody fly a drone or somebody enforce it, I don't know, I probably not. But it's something to think about, I don't know.
But I'm a residence town and I have a camper.
Yeah.
I've got ten cars in my driveway, you're not taxing me on the things I have in my driveway. So why are you gonna tax me on the things that I'm putting in front of my house here all of a sudden, just because it's?
I know what you're saying, but if you're.
It's a temporary structure too.
Yeah, you're making money, I don't know, it, it's hard to, like you said, how do you determine if somebody's renting out? And there's some, there's some we know, obviously, we know that they're renting out. And then there's some that might be hush, hush, that they're renting out.
There are some people that actually have just multiple boating vessels for.
Yeah.
Sporting, recreation, lounging, you know, pontoons, workboat, two jet skis, that's just somebody's house and they have a lot of toys.
Right. Yeah.
Our camp, technically, we have six slips in front of our camp.
Right, and how do you? Yeah.
And on Fourth of July, all six of those slips are filled, they're not, they're not filled all the time, people coming in and out and stuff like that, but.
Oh, I'm sure they are. Right, I'm sure they are, right, so I mean, I, I don't know, it's, it's a tough situation, it really is. I don't really see a, I don't see a, I don't really see a solution, to be honest with you, I don't. I don't know how you would come up with something that would be fair to everybody. Like Sandy said, you've got some people that have multiple boats, you know, and, and that's, should be okay. I do think there should be so many, you know, you should only be allowed so many if you have so much frontage, because that's a space permit then. You know, going out with a structure going like this, I don't think should be allowed. I think it should be, you've got, you can come off the shoreline every twenty feet, say twenty feet is a dock, because you really need about ten feet for a boat. So you say every twenty feet, you can put a dock.
We don't have to think of every single situation either, you can start as simply as you can't have a dock that extends out seventy-five feet.
Right.
You know?
Right.
I mean, we, we can start off with simpler type stuff.
But that may not be fair for everybody, water in the town water.
Right.
We let it out.
So there, meaning Ospey has different depths, there's like first three feet and you, you can't even put a boat until you put the first sixteen feet out.
Right.
So Ospey seems to be something you're focused on, but there are many bodies of water in the town, so.
There's no water.
Yeah, so that, what effect do you have if you have body of water in the town? So, um, that would be, that would be a concern. Um, I think certainly if the, you know, code office or whatever, as you said, drove around.
Um, if there are structures on the lake that supersede the summer school bans permit to find out, do they have the permit? That might be the first thing, cause we have two that are legal, the rest I have no idea about.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a start, um, in question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, just thinking, like, we're not particularly concerned if someone has. A lot of dock, or a lot of boats on their dock, if they own them all, because in all likelihood, they're only taking one or two out at a time, right? So it's not like, if it's one household, they're taking all six of their boats out at the same time, probably. Cause we're concerned about the impact of that many boats on the lake, or the impact of renting to six different households. On one dock, because then that's six different cars and then six different boats on the lake at the same time where you would normally expect one. So I'm still thinking, trying to addr- I, I'm almost wondering if addressing this, like, some communities address short-term rentals.
Right.
Where, but addressing it with the dock instead of short-term rentals. Could be like, uh, one strategy communities uses, you have to get a permit, but they want to make sure that people who have short-term rentals actually do get the permit and that they're not. Basically, um, motivated to not, to avoid getting the permit because the, the cost or the process to get the permit is too onerous. But then they cap the number of permits, um.
Yeah.
And have like a waitlist for getting a permit, so that way they can control, as you look outward, how many. Short-term rentals, you know, exist in a certain area, so.
That's a whole nother.
Well, yes, but I wonder, I wonder if that process, that process like that could work for the docks, because we're concerned about the accumulative. Effect, right, not, not of boat traffic and, and of the resulting car traffic that could be geared toward one area where there isn't space for that. Um, rather than a non-accumulative.
So, so I guess we're, we're making assumption that docks equal boats, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, docks are moorings, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the first question is, is that accurate? I mean, if I've got three friends and I've got. Space for them to even tie it on shore and they come out for the day, what's, what's the difference? Do you know what I mean? If I'm, if I have enough parking for them to go and put a boat in for the day, bring their vehicle over.
Yeah, there should be nothing wrong with that, that's for sure.
But that's, that's fifteen more boats for the day?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, if the concern's the boats, then, then that's the concern, then, you know what I mean? Like, I think we're making an assumption that dock equals boat.
Hmm. No, it's a good point Rebecca, because I don't know, and I, again, I keep referring back to this conversation, because we had it last year with, with Mike and he said. And I agreed, and I think we all did, is like, where do we start? And how does this, what's the end goal?
Yeah.
So if we're gonna limit boat traffic. Like you said, you could just, you could be a day user.
Right, right.
And we can't really tell somebody they can't have the dock they want.
Yes.
But, as John said, if we could regulate any more coming. Right.
Going forward.
Yeah, well, that's where I was thinking maybe a permit system for commercial rental of dock and mooring spaces.
Yeah.
Where like, if you're doing a one-off case worth one weekend and you have friends, you wouldn't need it, cause that wouldn't constitute a commercial use.
Right.
But if you're doing it constantly for the whole summer.
Right.
That would constitute a use and then you would.
Well, there is too, cause there's rental properties and the owners have their boats and, and then the, the weeklies have their boats. I know that is going on.
Mm-hmm.
So are we, are we saying we'll go to the homeowner?
Yeah.
And.
I don't know.
Require the permit or what have you?
I don't know, I, I think, I think the, the. I guess the first step in it is trying to figure out how we identify all of these things and what the true problems are, right? Because I think that's where, another thing that we left the other time was trying to figure out what actually, not what is the problem, but what's leading to the, the concern, right?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and opening up that thought, not focusing on one body of water, but focusing on all bodies of water.
Right.
To make sure that what we're proposing doesn't create hardship or isn't even manageable on another piece of water, right? So, I mean, I think, and I think we started doing that, we grabbed, I think we all took like different tasks or whatever and we gathered some data, but. I don't know that it gave us what we were looking for.
No, it didn't, no.
I mean.
What if we talk to, like, there's these larger dock companies that, that install docks all across the city, I mean, I'm sure they run to different communities with different regulations.
Yeah.
Could potentially pick their brains.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I understand, this is a challenging topic, there's a doubt. I just think it's worth looking into, cause I'd like to try to preserve the water, bodies of water.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, yeah, yeah.
Creates, there's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah.
I think something definitely needs to be done, it's just widening out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, though.
It's a real, it's a real touch.
They might have some insight, but.
I'll call the Saco River Recorder Commission too and see.
Sort of code enforcement officer that help, is helping us at this time. We may be able to pick his brain, the town has a boat issued to the code enforcement officer. Because they have eight bodies of water. So when we need to.
So they have regulation or they're, they're up against the same therapy?
We're gonna, we're gonna have Michaela and I are sitting down with him tomorrow to go over s- a few other things and this is on our list. Um, that we're gonna.
I missed, because they have regulation today or because they're faced with the same issue that we're faced with today?
I don't know, he, the conversation, the town is issued, can they vote?
Okay.
Because of the eight bodies of water that they have.
Gotcha.
Big bodies of water, yeah.
So we're gonna, you know, in our conversation tomorrow, find out what's, what they may have on the books already. Or what they're facing and could it potentially apply here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What time is that? Acton?
Acton, that's.
Kind of.
Hmm, they have a mooring ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
When you guys went for your ride, how many, how many, how many did you actually conserve? Did you count the number that you thought were, um, renting out? Cause I, I think, I think what we're talking about here is one place right now.
Yeah.
We know two have the proper stuff, there's one that doesn't, it was a commercial building for a long time that had docks at it. Um, but those docks have gotten much larger and, and we have one, one business, it's a business now.
It's a business.
It's a business. Have they gone through the proper channels as a business that everybody else has? Let's go, let's start there first. The, the other, the other structure that's out there is, is at Betty Lane, Birch Crest subdivision, all those houses.
Yeah, that's a.
They all, they each.
That's all association, right?
It's an association, they have one slot if they chose to buy into the dock.
Yeah, and that's for like, what, how many houses?
Fourteen or sixteen lots in there, so.
So they all have access.
And they all, and they all have boats, so everybody went in, so I think there's maybe ten, ten.
Maybe ten, maybe ten, yeah.
So we are really, we're, we're talking about one, one offender right now?
I, that's what I, I saw, I could think of, I mean, I thought of that too, but I'm like, I know that's part of that association.
I don't know that we need to rewrite the whole ordinance and do all this and look at all that, we have one.
Well, I think what Sandy said about the, what did you call it, a what, a land?
Submersible land.
Submersible land, I, I didn't know anything about that. I'm gonna go on a limb and say that Mike probably doesn't either. Because I don't think he was told that he needed to do that by our code enforcement officer. He did come to the town and ask and they said, yeah, and he's like, okay, I should be good.
I can guarantee you Sunnyside cottages and the Los Ospey Lake campground's tax bill is through the roof compared to what. The tax bill was at that coast next to the bo- boat launch, what he's paying and what he's bringing into revenue.
Right. Well, the campground is, how many sites, you can't compare that, even Sunnyside is a lot.
But they went through planning board approval at.
Right.
The docks were all through planning board when that.
Right.
It was, and part of that was that he would provide the public space for people to pull up.
Right.
Which, which.
It's there, yeah.
Quite scrutinized, lawyers, sunny, sunny side didn't go through that.
No, and when they went straight to the Arrowhead.
Straight to the bureau.
Yeah, they did first.
And, uh.
Bureau of Parks and Rec or?
No. Yeah, Bureau of Parks and Rec.
Parks and, sorry, Parks and Rec.
So you have, well, you really have one, one that's.
Yes.
Here. I'm sure there's a few other places where they.
A couple here, a couple there.
They're not standing at podium.
Right.
Who is electricity at the house.
Keep the boat there for the summer.
I don't, I don't drive by and see.
I don't either, I'm out there a lot, I mean, I was out a lot this summer and I didn't see like.
That's the one that's really.
Places that are like multiple.
Years is, I don't know how, how big, how, you know, you were in.
They went, like I said, it went from ten, it went from ten to eighteen.
Right.
Yeah.
Roger had ten. When Roger had the house.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think when my folks owned the restaurant, we had five, five.
Five docks, two boats, right.
Two boats on the thing.
Yeah, that's what he has.
And they could get gasoline back then or stop in for ice cream or.
Yeah, right.
I think that's something we had talked about too, was we're not sure exactly how large this problem is or isn't. And that getting some data like counts next summer when people are boating would be helpful, but it does seem like people. Might wanna like, do something before.
The boat traffic is bad, but I don't know if that's from. Everybody and their brother coming from benefit Saco and trailering and putting in, or if it's people that already have boats on the lake, I see a lot.
I would say.
You go by the, the launch on a Sunday and people are parked with boat, trucks and trailers in between the no parking signs. Literally, there's the headlights and there's a no parking sign, and there'll be ten of them along the side of room five and nobody would caught, we've asked the sheriff, enforce it, ticket them. They don't wanna bother, it's not, not, it's not worth it. So, when I see all those trucks and trailers, that has nothing to do with docks or people, you know, it's people from a, away. Coming to use this lake, they have a right to, I guess, I, I just think. Parking is like Michaela said, parking is a huge problem, safety issue. People crossing room five, you know, the boat launch, utilizing the boat launch, the boat launch has got jacked for parking. Half the time, people park on the other side with trailers, so people that wanna take their kids swimming don't even have a place to park, residents. So that's, that's one of the big concerns too, but keeping people from. I think if you're not a resident, you shouldn't be able to use the lake unless you're Pi, like Sebago charges twenty bucks. We should be charging people that don't have a, a thumb sticker.
Is there a launch private or public? Because our, the launch in Waterboro is public.
The launch at Sebago is public, the one right by Instandish, yeah, they charge twenty bucks.
Right, again, we, we discussed that too, but.
They have harbor master.
We gotta, we gotta go all the way out to where.
And the kid that, the kid that works, that does the.
Mill foil inspection, all he does is look for mill foil and is on Facebook, that's all the two, that's the only two things he does.
He doesn't, he can't enforce anything.
Once you put that harbor master into play, it opens up a lot of things that you can do with it.
Yes.
You're talking. How many, how many hours involved, maybe, seventies a week?
Right.
Votes, budgets, man?
Yeah.
You think, you, you think you spend a lot for contract deputy?
Right, oh, I know, that was a concern.
Yep.
Way back was, was the, the, the cost of having a harbor master, the cost of enforcement, so. I don't know, do we really have as big of a problem as what we think? I don't know.
Did we ever find out if we had a baseline number from past reviews? On boats' activity fluctuations during certain periods of time?
No, I talked to Matt about trying to get in touch with the, um, game wardens to see if they had any estimates on their end.
Design in sheets or the inspection sheet sheets from the boat checks.
Right, from the launch.
You gave, you gave them to me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You wanted to look at the data and stuff.
Okay, is that in here?
No, I gave them to you.
It was a while ago, I remember that last time.
Yeah, I think I do remember that, now that you say that, yeah, I don't remember what I, I do remember looking at it, I don't remember what the, the results were. Off the top of my head.
So we all agree something shouldn't be done, so what are our next steps logically? Michaela, Michaela.
Um, we can. I think we need more information, so I can call the Saco River Recorder Commission, pick their brain. I think calling the dock companies is a good idea too, and call.
I think the guy from Acton too would be.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to him, so that's three people, the game warden, so.
Figure out what other, other communities or towns or whatever you wanna call it.
I've looked into that, not a ton in Maine do a ton on this issue.
Yeah.
Um, which is why it's fairly tricky.
Yeah.
Or I think emblematic of the fact that it's fairly tricky, there's not, there's not a ton, because it, it seems to come back to the harbor master thing. Acton has a harbor master now, it's their code enforcement officer, um, so.
I know Newfield charges dock permits.
But, yeah, I'll do some more digging, we'll have these conversations, um, maybe we can circle back. The, an- another meeting that the agenda seems decent. And, uh, follow up on all of what these conversations led to and then figure out next steps from there.
Should we also try to, try to gather all the issues that we're talking about, just so that we have a concentrated list?
Yeah, I can put together a list, you know, I kind of have a running one, um, but I can, can put it together more like a memo type form.
That we make sure we touch everything or anything we should.
Yeah, cause at the time, it sounded like things were getting reported to Mike, but I don't know that we had any information about what was being reported to me.
Cause I think.
Yeah, I think that's what brought it up, right, was, was part of it.
And he was feeling the pressure, I thought, from the town council.
Yeah.
To do something, but that's where we left it.
Well, just another note on this, uh, Glenn Charette, our former code officer, says state regulates docks and moorings permit by rule needed for a dock. Uh, M D E P can request a third party inspector. If you go to AI, it says dock installation is governed by the National Resource Protection Act, requires a permit from. Maine Department of Environmental Protection before construction.
Is that, must be permanent, yeah, must be permanent.
That sounds like it's more like talking.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a dock, it's, it's, I mean, it's permanent in the season, obviously it comes out in the winter, but. And do you consider that permanent if it's in there?
I suppose like the footings, yeah.
They move.
I think the National Resource Protection, that dock that they're game at is almost like the one over by, um, Jack Hughes. The.
Oh.
Yeah, they're, they're not talking about temporary residential docks.
I'm more than happy to help anyway as well.
Yeah, I think it's definitely worth, you know, continuing to talk about it, I, I agree with you, I mean, I think there's, there's numerous issues, I mean, if you're gonna talk. I mean, my experience is only with Ospey and there's a lot of things there, I think most of the things I see would be controlled by the association, more so than the town. Um, you know, I think, you know, personal opinion is that there's some motors on that lake that don't belong there. And, you know, but you can't control that with anything that we're talking about here, right? We have no purview over that, but I think that's more the association and what they allow there. And, you know, I just, I think that there probably should be boundaries on there, we specifically moored our boat for a while because people came too close around the. The corner and we had kids swimming out there and it was dangerous for them to be out there, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things, I just don't know what the town can control. Versus that individual body of water and what rules and regulations they establish to, to protect their residents and things like that, but. I, I think it definitely needs to be, it's a great, you know, if we're talking specifically about Ospey, it's, it's a great lake and we have a lot of great bodies of water and I think it is our duty to protect them. As much as we can, so I think we should keep on talking about it, I think, just have to be fair in what we do and that it's, that we're not constricting people based on. Their personal property, that's my.
Yeah.
That was one. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so next was minutes from previous meetings, um, well, here's what we're gonna do. We're, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from August twentieth and, uh, August seventeenth and October first. We will postpone the minutes for September third and August sixth.
Yes, all right, you need a motion?
Can I get a motion to approve? October, uh, we'll go in order here, August twentieth, September seventeen and October first.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August twentieth, September seventeenth and October first.
Correct.
And part of that motion is to postpone.
We'll need two, so, we'll do two separate motions, okay, yeah, can I get a second on?
Sure.
They approve all those minutes, all those in paper. All right, and then can I get the other motion?
I make a motion to postpone the review of the meeting minutes from August eighth and September third.
I'll check it out.
All those in paper, all right. Um, next is communication. You got anything Angela, Michaela, does? Got anything Angela, Michaela, does, no? Um, miscellaneous, uh, just a reminder that we still have two open seats with a big audience tonight on the planning board, if there's any members of the community interested. Um, if not tonight, you can always come back, um, next, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.